There you go.
All right. I'll call to order the August 13th meeting of Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors, our normal business meeting. Currently, we have three directors seated, Director Sexton, French, and Norris. We expect Director Green. Director Skirvin is excused for today. He said that he wouldn't be up. Personal reasons. And so we'll go ahead and do the consent agenda. Shall we approve the consent? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? The minutes from the previous meeting in the financial report?
I move that we approve those.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let it be known that the consent agenda has been approved. Now, do we have any comments from citizens that have signed up? Did anyone sign up? Nobody signed up? Is there anybody that hasn't signed up that would like to speak? Very well. Mr. Rich?
Larry Rich, 4590 Northeast Loop Drive, Otis. This is the first board meeting that my wife and I have attended or been able to attend since April. And I just wanted to congratulate the newly elected board members. And I also think that even if the lake continues to have problems, we know that you guys will do your best. But more importantly, we know that you will listen to us and work with us. And that means a lot. So, good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the audience? Very well, Paul. Unfinished business, Devils Lake Plan?
Okay, thank you. First, on the subset of the Devils Lake Plan is the septic and sewer item. The update in your staff report includes a buildable lands inventory that Lincoln County completed at our request. And basically what that shows is there are, first off, there are 218 undeveloped sites. And on the map, you can see those that are within the urban growth boundary in basically your district and that are, you know, undeveloped. So, that have a potential for development. Now, there's a couple planning scenarios that could happen. These properties could develop under county planning, or they could develop eventually under city planning. I mean, urban growth boundaries are effectively annexable properties. That's the intent of the law, or the, not the law, but the organ planning goals, your goals, the state planning goals, is you preserve land for agricultural uses, forestry uses, urbanization. And these would be lands that are preserved for, to become urbanized. So, the question really that this stems towards answering is what type of impact can you have on the watershed by increasing the development? And is that, you know, accelerated by providing sewer, which allows higher density? And certainly, the case is yes. It provides greater opportunity for density, which again, is called for in, you know, the larger statewide plan goals, which the city and the county all fit in. Now, what was kind of interesting though is, you know, you certainly, under Approach One and Two, and they're outlined as what that means, and thanks to Wei Radomski, who did this work for us at the county planning department. You have an opportunity of different lot sizes. So, there's actually a matrix of four potential answers, none of which are the correct answer. They're just kind of guiding us towards what is kind of a maximum, if anything, of development. And Approach One, A, we'll call it, is 5,000 square foot lot size. And let's just, I'll just read it. "On a lot-by-lot basis, the additional lots, number of lots that can be subdivided from an existing lot was determined. This approach does not take into account the area needed for access and streets." So, this is kind of a gross assessment. The second approach accounts for at least a 25% land use for such accesses. And of course, if you provide for that, you lose development space. So, under the 5,000 square foot lot size, you could have up to 4,000, over 4,000 properties come into the city. Effectively, that would be, most likely, would be an urbanization. Or, under the 7,500 square foot lot size, which is the existing planning, there's up to 2,561 properties. Now, you look at adding the streets, which I think is more reasonable, and it's basically 1,400 and about 900 properties. Yeah, I think that's an important thing to just understand. And as far as when we look at, if there's, if the sewer does come around the lake, which we hope that it would do, that we understand that with urbanization comes other impacts. And those impacts are typically streets, and rooftops, and lawns, and dogs, and, not, but those are real impacts that change the way water lands reaches the lake, nutrients that are applied to someone's property that aren't taken up by the force that it's come to, been replaced. So, with urbanization, you know, I think the real need is to protect a water body such as Devils Lake, and I think this is widely accepted, is you need to understand those impacts and reduce those impacts. And that's often dealing with your stormwater runoff, building in a way that you don't actually create additional stormwater. And that's possible. You can create developments that actually don't increase the runoff outside of the footprint of those properties. And that's called a, you know, a low-impact development. And so, one thing that the county and the city are working on is this, and it's part of this, kind of another item within the Devils Lake Plan here and septic and sewer, is the urban growth management agreement. So, urban growth management agreement looks at saying, okay, how are these properties that are supposed to become part of a municipality eventually, as designated by this urban growth boundary? How do we see fit that those do become part of that city? And that agreement helps dictate that. Now, some of the interests that they've had from us is to help in guiding maybe some of the language that might go into what an agreement might look like. Should there be a stream buffer, a lake buffer, associated with new urbanization? This is kind of the time to start really working those things into the fabric of development and into how properties may become part of a municipality that we all live in or near, live in, and affect Devils Lake. The other aspect of that is, that's a little bit of a 10,000-foot level approach to how things become urbanized. The real approach is through the comprehensive plan. And that's something that the county and the city is poised to do their update for. And it is probably more so through that process that we should really be engaged and would be a stakeholder, that they would in fact be required to engage with other stakeholders to find out where, you know, we're overlying taxing district. But it's really just a partnership that we need to be present for. So, within that process, and I guess this is just punting to you all, for your thoughts and your, to start kind of just, kind of, well, to think about this kind of in a larger scope. What do you see as reasonable approaches to safeguarding the lake, which may come part of, say, a comprehensive plan?
Now, when is that? When are they meeting on?
It's not scheduled yet. It's still probably even like a year or so out. Yeah. I think they're looking at hiring a consulting firm to lead that process. So, it'll be a while yet.
For the urban growth management agreement?
No, for the comprehensive plan.
For the plan amendments?
Yeah. The urban growth management agreement is contemplated as being even finished by the end of last fiscal year. So, that's pretty close to being, you know, it's in their game plan to have done it just last fiscal year. And they do have a draft, as you know. The language is, you know, like I said, very high level, 10,000-foot level. It says that the city and the county shall, and I'm not going to quote it right, but consult each other in matters about Devils Lake, you know, period. Something to that effect. That's a door. It's at least an open door. At least it makes it known that they should be working. But, you know, I guess where we would help key in is, you know, as the managing entity at Devils Lake, I think we have insight into how that, those relationships might be beneficial as to how it's developing.
Do we know what the buildable lands are in Lincoln City?
Offhand, no, I don't. But the city probably has a full list of that.
I guess, I have a whole lot of questions. But the first one is, is why would Lincoln City be looking to expand out that way unless, I think, because my understanding is with urban growth boundaries, and the reason they're set up is to, you know, have room to expand in when necessary. But I can't see Lincoln City wanting to take on the back of the lake.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody said that they do want to. But what the urban growth management agreement is, is within properties that are, say, up 23rd Street, that aren't maybe in the watershed, they're in the Baldy Creek watershed, or other properties that are in the county yet, but would potentially be annexed for other reasons. So, it's not just about Devils Lake's watershed. It's agreement, the urban growth management area exists outside of our boundaries, too.
Okay, so let me take it back to the reason why we should be talking about it, or why we are talking about it, is sewer.
Right, yeah. Because you provide sewer. Now, so, you know, part of your question was, you know, why would the city be looking to annex additional properties? Often, that's not the case. It's a developer that's looking to be annexed. That's often where development, the driver is often coming from the private sector, not from the city.
Sure, but, I mean, I guess I'm, okay. One developer's not going to drive sewer going around the back of the lake, though. Right? I mean, and annexing has to happen to bring the sewer around, right? No?
No, you know, it doesn't have to, you know? And Rhodes End is a perfect example of that. You know, Rhodes End was, has a sewer, and it was not annexed until, what, 2013 or 14 or whatever it was finalized. That was a 25-year-plus plan. So, the extension of municipal services, urban services, does not require annexation. Often, they go hand-in-hand. Because there's a lot of cost to them, and this, you know, the city would probably want to recoup costs associated with those. I think there is certainly the possibility of urbanization without annexation. And that occurs, that's going to occur under county planning and/or city planning. It's just going to happen. There's going to be urbanization. It's just, when you look at higher-density urbanization, then your impacts become even greater, right? I mean, you just get more streets, you get more rooftops, you get more dogs again. And all those, you know, and lots of, you know, lots of trees that would be pulling those nutrients out that are just, the rainfall that's carrying with them. So, just impacts directly right there.
So, I guess, and call me simple-minded, but to me, it makes a whole, I mean, I get what you're saying, and again, you know, 30 years from now, I think maybe we're on to something, and not that we shouldn't be dealing with it at all. But we have 400 septic tanks on the lake, and, don't quote me on that number, but I don't know how many. And I just don't understand why we're not trying to develop something to make sure that those are operating at their best and highest use. And, you know, a voluntary inspection program just seems like something that should be a no-brainer, that that's where we should be putting our effort. And I said it last month, and I'll say it again this month, if one septic tank repaired on the lake improves the lake. And putting all of our eggs in, you know, septic and urban growth management agreements and, you know, planning, not that, not that, you know, you ignore planning, because someday you're right, someday it's going to happen, and we need to be on top of it to some extent. But I just feel like we keep ignoring the elephant in the room of, we have septics on the lake, and, you know, I've heard for meeting after meeting that we have failing septics on the lake. So, what can we do?
Well, I certainly don't think anybody's arguing that we're not trying to get a inspection program of some level. You know, voluntary or not, I think the previous discussions have revolved around mandatory because of the value of having a mandatory inspection.
Sure.
Over a voluntary one, which you probably get your least likely offenders to not participate. And so, I mean, I'm not arguing against that. There's already a voluntary inspection program. You just go get yourself inspected. You can go voluntarily get inspected today. So...
That's not a program.
Well, okay, fair enough. It's not a program, but there's an opportunity.
Sure.
Well, what would a voluntary inspection program be that we don't have now?
I mean, it could be something, I mean, it could be where we ask, you know, 10 property owners, I mean, it could be no different than the Save Our Shoreline program with the same amount of effort and dollars put into it that is much more effective. Because if, I'll pick on Miles, if Miles has a septic, and he says, sure, come and inspect it, and they say, hey, you need a $2,000 or $3,000 repair, I'm guessing that he wants to repair that rather than wait until it fails and then have a $20,000 bill. Any repair that we can do, or if it's necessary. You know, I'm sure there are going to be people out there that say, no, you're not coming on my property. But I'm also sure that there are people out there that will say, sure, come and inspect my septic.
Well, how do we not get more people inspected if the inspection program is mandatory versus voluntary? You're just going to have more inspections.
What mandatory? Where are we with a mandatory? I got, what mandatory? I, it's not in this packet. There's nothing on it in here. There wasn't anything on it last month, so...
Well, yeah, the city has kind of dropped into a holding pattern to wait to see what happens with sewer, idea being that you don't want to have, you don't want to enact a mandatory program and then, you know, follow that with sewer like two years later, and trap a bunch of people into, A, having to, being caught with a failing system, having to replace that system, and then two years later, having to replace their new system with sewer.
But even in your LID, in our workshop, you said people have up to 20 years to hook up to it?
True.
So, if I replace my septic tank today under a mandatory inspection program, I'm 30 years away from having to hook up to any sewer that runs around the back of the lake, I must say. Because we don't have a sewer today.
Yeah, if, yeah, if the sewer program that went on the other side of the lake authorized the same thing, yeah, then you'd have 20 years, which would be, that's a great thing.
And it's...
The original proposal was no mandatory hookup ever. You only had to hook up if the system was determined to be failing. Period. So, and I was surprised in the LID how people actually went along with, almost unanimously, with a 15-year program. I don't know how it got adjusted all of a sudden right at the end from 15 to 20, but that's fine. Point being that, yeah...
You're making my argument for me, I guess.
Well, I'm making an argument for a mandatory inspection program together with a sewer, that, yeah, if you don't have to hook up for 20 years, then fabulous. Do mandatory inspections, catch the people who need to hook up after you've installed the sewer, and then they just hook up a sewer instead of, that's the best of all worlds, I think.
I'm not necessarily opposed to mandatory, other than I've been sitting in these meetings for quite some time, and I haven't, and maybe I'm just ignorant of what progress we've made on it, but...
Well, I think Brian really touched on it. It's really the holding pattern that the city really kind of invoked to...
But a voluntary, we don't need the city, right?
Yeah, I mean, no, you don't.
So, we could have 10 systems inspected by this meeting next month if we had a voluntary one? I mean, potentially.
Yeah, and...
But I certainly, okay, but as long as it's not in place of moving forward with a mandatory inspection.
I mean, I guess I just think that baby steps are better than no steps. And, I mean...
Yeah, well, we're trying to get past this impasse of, you know, people holding back, or the city holding back on the mandatory program, waiting to see what happens with sewer, and make something happen with sewer, or not, and then, you know, move forward or not with a mandatory inspection.
I guess when I see a buildable lands inventory, and I'll just take the low one of another thousand houses on the back of the lake, I'm not sure that the sewer going around the back of the lake is going to improve the water over a thousand houses being built on the back of the lake.
That's absolutely part of the discussion, Tina. So, that's exactly why...
...lands a dollars on a sewer only to end up with worse water quality?
That's exactly, that's exactly why the interest is there. And in fact, you know, if you look at the Devils Lake Plan, that's exactly what's called out. It says, calls for sewer, but it calls for it with, you know, sensible land use development such that we don't end up permanently ruining Devils Lake, to just look at it plainly. Because you have such urbanization, you've urbanized the lake. If you urbanize the lake beyond repair, you've done that, right? And so, that's exactly, exactly to the point that you're making as well. And that's exactly what we put in the Devils Lake Plan.
There's a huge glaring omission, I think, in this discussion of the buildable lands inventory. And that is that since 1992, I don't know if this is an active city policy or actually a part of an ordinance, but the city only authorizes one water service per lot created before 1992. And there's been one exception to that in the last 23 years. So, the idea that all of a sudden, you know, these properties are going to be able to build out from the 218, 218 lots that now exist, is a huge assumption. In fact...
If it's in the city limits.
Only one reason the city might be willing to drop that policy is if sewer did get extended. Because then you wouldn't have the, all the additional septics that you could create if you authorized people to start subdividing those lots created before 1992.
I wonder if, I mean, since it appears to be, the city has put things on hold, isn't this more of a county or watershed issue? I mean, really, it's our watershed issue. I know that I looked at a program, they were up in the Olympia, the watershed that I shared with Paul, where they were looking at putting sewer in a large area. And, you know, it's an expensive process. So, they went ahead and did a mandatory septic inspection program. They actually trained their homeowners to do their own inspection. And it seems to be working up in that area. If we maybe should be working with the county rather than the city, wouldn't that be as looking at it as a watershed? Wouldn't that be a better solution to what we're really looking at for us?
Well, it is a watershed issue, you know? But you don't forget that the city, you know, because they control access to water, I mean, they're, they can be as involved as they want to be on searing the east side of the lake. So, yeah, it's watershed, but it's not just county, it's also city.
And they have the sewer system, the current sewer system.
Well, sure, yeah.
Okay.
I went and had a meeting with the county planner to ask him about this buildable lands and just to kind of bring me up to speed on where we were at. And one of the things that he suggested is getting a committee together, and, I mean, this fits right in with your goals of having volunteer committees. And I think that this should definitely be one of those committees of septic sewer information finding, you know, what is best, and, you know, a committee that can meet with the cities and the county, and the landowners, and us, and really spend some time on this. Because I think that, you know, there's probably been work done that I don't know about, obviously. But just feel like we, you know, I mean, Brian said it himself of it's sitting in a black hole in the city where one septic inspected, and I hate to reiterate myself over and over, but one septic inspected next week puts us 100% better than we were last week. So, I don't, I don't...
I don't disagree. I just think that you're going to get more inspections if it's a mandatory program than not. But, you know, we've got to get out of this holding pattern of waiting for...
Would you have your septic inspected voluntarily if your name was drawn out of the hat by Dillwood?
But I haven't inspected voluntarily. Probably.
I mean, I know you probably would.
I would.
I would. And I bet you most people out there would. That's five septic systems that could be inspected next month. And so, that's five more than this mandatory program has got us. And I'm not saying that you have to throw that out, but how many, how many septics could we have inspected in the meantime until this black hole is, mandatory is gone?
So, I'd be curious as to the funding mechanism you would see for inspections. I know, Kent, you were talking about training homeowners. But would you, I mean, I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I would like to have like a little steering committee of this to find information out. I mean, how much does it cost to have these inspected? You know, what are the, what are the mechanisms to inspect it? You know, are we talking about a dye test, a powder test, digging holes? I don't know. I'm not a septic person, but it sure seems like if we have $750 for Save Our Shoreline that we've spent very little of, maybe we could put that into septic inspections. I don't know.
So, what I hear, Tina, you saying is that part of our goals should be, you're advocating that we should have, we should be working toward at least, at minimum, voluntary sewer inspection system that we support.
Or septic.
And I mean, maybe you get a plaque out on your dock or in front of your house or whatever that, hey, I hadn't, I passed, whatever.
And I don't, I agree with that, but I just don't want it to be in lieu of trying to move toward...
I don't have any problem with moving forward with mandatory.
A mandatory system, because you're not going to get the worst offenders with a voluntary system. And the other thing is, even with, even with, I don't know what kind of inspection you envision, but you're not going to get our old, our very old drain fields, you're not going to catch the ones that are leaching to groundwater, which is going to be most of the ones that are, that's what's going to be wrong with them, if there's something wrong. We're not going to, you're not going to catch that. So, you're just back to the need to really just replace septics with sewer. And that's the bottom line that we need to be working toward. And I just come back to...
I know, but Brian, I mean, you even said, you know, you worked really hard to get your LID, and that's, that's great. But it's 20 years from now.
Well, that's not a reason to wait another 20 years. So, then we can wait another 20 years.
And if we can, if we can be repairing some septics in the next 20 years, we've made some headway.
I got no, I just said, no problem with your voluntary program. I just don't want to see it become a substitute for the mandatory. So, let's work on all of it.
That's what I, that's what I hear, the conversation is that maybe we should at least be, Tina's advocating stepping stone of a voluntary sewer inspection program, and maybe we form a committee of board members, citizens, to help steer that, and then move that to a mandatory system along with sewer. That's, I think, what she's advocating.
Fabulous.
Okay, good. We'll bring that up in our goals.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Okay. Are there any other?
Well, Paul, do you understand what I have been told that the city is...
Absolutely, yeah. The density issue is not going to happen really without annexation. You can't, the city is not, particularly not density on septic.
It's not going to happen without sewers. It doesn't necessarily.
But not density likely on septic without annexation.
I don't, I don't think that. I think the density increase is not going to happen without sewer, not necessarily without annexation. You don't have to have annexation to get sewer.
Right. Yeah, right. I agree.
Any other further?
No.
Okay. Onto the next item, is that finance?
Yeah, so I just, I just put this in here because, you know, I think the real, one of the goals will remain, we'll find out, is to get a sewer on Devils Lake or to get searing continuing to happen around the, the developed parts of Devils Lake. You know, Niatus, certainly the rest of the west side that's in the city. And so, you know, much of that work has happened over the last year and a half. And that's been, how can we get, how can we finance that? Now, the first step towards that answer came from folks at DEQ and USDA and other folks and said, you need to get a sewer master plan updated and you need to get this environmental review. And those things are done, are being done. There's another opportunity with some specialized grant, you know, folks. And there's just, there's a meeting that, that Brian and I and David Hocker and Ron Tierney will be having with a group out of Denver, Colorado that specializes in, in such projects. And they helped the city of Newport tremendously recently. So I put that out there because really finding out the, you know, if you can, if it can't happen financially, it can't happen. But we're finding that it, there's a lot greater likelihood, certainly than there was in the 90s. In the 90s, it was a $30 million project. Now it's looking like a $6 million project thanks to this sewer master plan revisited that we'll see here in a couple of weeks. The finances that USDA were talking about were a good million starting of grants. The low interest loans that the, that DEQ could provide would be supplemental to that. There may be some other opportunities too. There also may be a requirement to match some of that money, which is typically the case when you're looking at grants. And that's going to be revenue that the city or the sewer district or somebody's got to come up with, you know. And so those, those discussions are ongoing and will be occurring, not just here, not at this meeting, but just, just, just to be aware of that. That's why I put that in there for us.
And let's see. Do you want to give us an update on the Voyage Lake LID?
I bet you, yeah. We, the, as the manager's report says, they put the project out to bid. Devils Lake Rock came in with a low bid of 278. Lost my place. I think it's 278,000. Now that's just, remember the estimated cost was about 381, but that the 278 does not include engineering, which is about 50,000. Doesn't include the city's administrative fee. It's 10% of the project. So it comes back to about, the estimate of about the 381. But it's right there and not higher. So it was good news. I called Devils Lake Rock today so I'd have something to report about when this might happen. And I was told that they hadn't scheduled it yet. By contract, they're obligated to complete it by May of 2016. So that's what I know.
So it's moving forward and, now, I, I, I can't recall, do you have a cost on that per?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, right about $8,000 per lot for the paving and the sewer line down the middle of the road and the laterals to the property, to each property.
And then is that it? Just $8,000? There's no additional?
Well, then when you hook up, the, the estimate is about 15,000 for the pump. It's about 5,000. The SDC, the city's, the sewer system development charge, I think it's now at about 6,000. And then, you know, labor, hookup labor, decommissioning the old, the septic system.
So the total package?
A couple of things come to, to, to about that, 15,000. If you do in the first three years, all of that total of 23,000 is financeable. The different loan programs, DEQ. The city is going to authorize for the first time in its history a installment plan payment for the, for the SDC, the system development charge. And then after the three-year period, you know, you're on your own for the, for the hookup and the, and the system development charge. That $8,000 amount will be assessed pretty much as soon as the job gets done. It can be paid off at once or financed over, I think it's, I've forgotten the term now. It comes out to $42 a month.
Thank you. Let's see. Communications report, do you have anything to report there, Paul?
I'm just scrolling through. Well, just an announcement that the college is having an open house there. We're actually housed at the college, so we'll be participating in that. That's next, not next Monday, but two Mondays from now, noon to four. Invite people to come by. We're in Coast Community College. See our stuff, see the lab, et cetera. The other item really revolves around the Devils Lake Revival. And there's a lot of detail in there for your review. Up to you how much you want to talk about it and what you want clarified or anything else.
Well, I, I honestly, I appreciate the, the detail involved. As I read through it, I thought it was comprehensive in what took place and the different activities. In all honesty, I mean, what I, what I'm looking for in the end is, you know, I guess from you, Paul, or from the board, I have, I certainly have my own opinion, but, you know, I guess what we should say, say to ourselves is, was this close to $9,000 well spent for what we got out of it? And if so, what was, what was good about it? If not, what do we need to change for the future? And so I think, you know, it was a lot of detail, but I just thought, as I was looking through it, I was shocked by the number of hours that, what was, what was our contractor's name?
Belinda Goody of Bestival.
Right. 227 hours she apparently put into the event and I guess Miles and I were up at, we were doing the parking. And our observations were, and Miles can probably echo my concern, is that most people that came were really there for the park and they didn't know about the revival. And we sent them down to the revival and certainly the people that were there enjoyed it. But it, there wasn't a lot as much going on as I would have hoped. And we didn't have the crowds I would have hoped. And so, you know, I, I just think it wasn't, it just wasn't as well attended as we could have had for that kind of money. That was my opinion. Bill, you were there too. I don't know what your opinion is on what took place or, the people that were there were having fun. No doubt about it. But we spent a lot of money for, we could have had a lot better attendance. I know, Bill, do you have an opinion on what you saw? You ran the boat.
What I saw was a bunch of people that were uninformed about the event, that were just there, like you say, as a a day at the lake. Although there was an event there that we were putting on, it was well received. And I think that monetarily, we don't need to contract it out because there's enough people involved with this district that could pull that off. And it'd be another $10,000 towards our betterment of the water quality rather than public awareness. Public involvement's great. I don't think it needs to be a major financial burden on our district when we're trying to figure out where we're going to get these monies that we need to work on the lake. So if need be, I'd be willing to volunteer my time to head something up like that, just to save the district money. So, and there's probably a lot more people that could get involved as well to make it a more efficient event as far as, although we have a lot of participation through other agencies, we can still do an outreach and recruit more people to help us achieve that without a contractor having to take our funds.
Well, and, and, you know, I know Regatta Grounds has limitations because of parking. That's, that's one of the things that, you know, you try to hold a quality event there and parking's always going to be an issue. But what I would, what I would, as I looked at that and thought about, you know, what we want to do in the future, I really think we ought to have some sort of a lake celebration. I, I don't think we ought to throw that away. How we do it, what we focus it around is where I'd like to see something that where it'd be different. I think a great opportunity in the future might be to do it around the Fourth of July in conjunction with the fireworks of the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. That event the last two years put on strictly by donations and has had a lot of participation from the lake owners as well as just people coming and watching the fireworks. I mean, it's been a, a great thing, but if we could do something around that in the future, I think that would be a real positive. We could, we could spin off of that and, and really make it a celebration, which I think it should be.
What's the, it seems like the stage was like going strong for about a week and now it's just a hole in the ground.
They got the concrete poured.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they have the frame, yeah.
Because I'm wondering, you know, if we, if we made it more of a, you know, a festival with either, you know, a concert on the stage or, and I know that in the meeting that you and I had with Miles and the VCB Director Ed.
Tricep.
Yes. And, you know, we talked about when we have events on the lake, like the Devils Lake Dash, that we were meeting with the promoters there of, you know, just building around an event with layers of lots of things. And so, I mean, I guess what I would want to know is, you know, what is the goal of the revival? If it's just to get people to Regatta Grounds Park or is it really to get people out on the water? I mean, definitely Fourth of July is the time to do that because you can't hardly move on the lake. There's a lot of people on the water. And so if we're trying to get people through, you know, food booths and stuff like that, I think vendors would be more amicable to show up to something where they know there's going to be people there to offer.
Well, it might, I don't know what the logistics would be or anything, but we might, you know, make it a more of a total lake instead of just at Regatta Grounds. Maybe we could incorporate the state park across there. They have more parking too.
And even Sandpoint, you know, you could do a concert on the barge at Sandpoint. I know that's one of the things we brought up. You know, doing something fun with like a boat in type thing, you know, where it expands more parts of the lake. I don't.
Well, I, I guess, I mean, I, I would like to see us expand it. Maybe, especially because we've got, the neighborhood association's already kind of established something. And I assume they're going to try to do something next year with around the Fourth of July too, like they have in the last two. But if we could, you know, coordinate and spin off with that and do some other things, I think that it would be a real true celebration and a real something that we could say, hey, we've done a good job there. And I, and I'd like to see it, I'd like to see our manager to be, I mean, it's, it's ours, you know. So instead of contracting out, I'd like to see Paul, you know, take charge of that. We, we started late on this. It was suggested, you know, if we know enough ahead of time, a year ahead of time or so, you know, we could be putting those things in place for next year, I think, and make it a true celebration. That would be my, that'd be my suggestion.
It could be one of our committees.
It could be.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, again, I think that is exactly right up a committee's sleeve.
I do kind of like the idea of adding it to the other Fourth of July stuff going on the lake. Because I don't know how, how to get more people there by any other method.
Right, right. Well, and, and, I mean, really what's happened with the fireworks the last two years has been fabulous, what they've done. And, and we should, I, I think as a board, we could support that. Part of our charge is to promote recreation and promote the lake and, gosh, that's a, a perfect thing to do that there. So that's my suggestion.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll say aloud, I'm thinking it'd probably be a lot easier to get more help from the DLNA if it was on the Fourth of July.
Right.
There's your committee.
There we go.
Paul, I had a question. What, what are your thoughts on your, your workload during that time? Is it too much for you as a coordinator or do you need additional help in putting something like that together? I'm just not clear on the, the need for the contractor. Yeah, so, you know, the.
I know there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, the reason, yeah, I mean, it's certainly summertime is, is high intensity. We've got an intern that typically has just come on. You know, it's not really an opportunity for them to take it on, unfortunately, unless they were starting like in April. You know, that's really more the, the planning horizon for say a July 4th event would be at least by April. So, yeah, I would rely on staff to do that or because the district so chose, they had a contractor do it. Previously, we had staff do it. We had our project manager basically create the event from scratch. You know, some of the goals were just to get, you know, we're asking what, what, what were the goals? Well, just to get people to the lake, celebrate the lake, to regenerate the idea of the grass carp festivals. That's hence the name of the revival. We're reviving the grass carp festivals. I mean, all of that was, was at play. And, you know, he and I, Seth sat down with previous organizers of the grass carp festivals and, you know, fed off of their information. And frankly, the reason those kind of died is because of attrition of, of the effort. It, it was a lot of effort for them to put those on and it's certainly a lot of effort for anybody to put something like at that scale on. And, you know, the number of hours that you, that you talk about that Linda put into this are spot on to what the number of hours that Seth put into it in the years before. So it's like 225 hours plus. And then you see the additional hours that I had and, and also Elizabeth. So it's surprising, I think. I think it's sobering how much effort it takes to put on something like that. Because you can have a great day at the, at the lake just with the sun coming out, right? I mean, that's, that's the reality is you can get not that many people. I mean, I've never seen that kind of crowd on just a sunny day, but you get pretty good crowds at Regatta Grounds if it's a nice day. So, you know, they're not getting any of the supplementary kind of stuff of outreach and education. So yes, you know, we could take it on if that was the goal. Certainly starting in December, you know, as far as the plan horizon. But I think it's really, it gears up in the last month and a half. That's where a lot of, I mean, all you can really get done in December is maybe you could book a band and could reserve the spot and get your insurance taken away, taken care of and those type of things. Those are important, but.
Right. You know, to, and, and I think working with a committee, you can get a lot of work out of a committee.
I'm assuming you have a written plan of like what needs to be done?
Yeah, absolutely we do, yeah.
You have a committee and you could, could, you know, delegate. You, you secure vendors, you do permits, you, you know. I think that you could get a lot of 250 hours of work done.
Yeah, and, and that's literally where the, the number is. I think it's pretty fair.
Surprising that 250 hours equates to four hours of festival.
Yeah, right. Yeah. And that's not including the other bit of stuff, yeah. It's, it's really, it really is amazing.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's, it's, it is a big expense. It always has been a fairly big expense. I mean, just when we were advertising and buying, you know, prizes, you know, six grand, it were going out the door pretty quick, you know? So I think that's what we thought we would budget the last year and we ended up, you know, spending what you see here, you know, because we went with a professional.
Right.
And, and for the exact same reason of saving staff time. You know, the staff costs would be higher based on that same number of hours. So you'd end up spending more money than what we were able to contract for.
Honestly, honestly, we wouldn't be spending more money. We'd be reallocating your time, reallocating your time.
Spending, yeah, no, but I think that the, the dollars also equate though too. We need to be cognizant of that because that is staff time that's not able to be spent on other things.
Right.
Where expertise may be preferable. And whereas, you know, for $25 an hour, you've got an event planner.
Right.
Which, which was actually pretty, pretty cheap. You know, the other offers that we got were two thirds or a third more than that.
Right.
And the other estimates were even higher based on-
That's why I made the fact that maybe we should dig within ourselves and spare a little more time to make it happen rather than making it easier for everybody and just fork out $10,000 and be done with it. Well, I'm more geared to a do it yourselfer and you have just as good as time is my, my opinion.
And I think, and I think there's a lot of people that are willing to help, right, Miles? See, there's others back there. I see hands up. So, yeah, I, I think we're onto a good thing if we involve, if we, if we involve a committee and, and the public. I think that we just get that much more participation. Okay, do we have any others?
I have one more. I'd like to do a personal thank you to Steve and Mary Cunningham for donating, volunteering their boat for everybody to ride on and look at the lake. So thanks, Steve and Mary.
Yes.
Absolutely. And they said that they're actually looking for a buyer too. So just as an advertisement on their behalf, they are looking for a buyer for that.
Big for sale sign on the front.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. Okay. Uh, let's see. Safety report, any other things here, Paul, than the, in the-
No, besides the fact that we forgot to put our life jackets on when we got on the boat today, I will admit until, for about five minutes. So it, those kind of things do happen.
Okay. Midcoast TMDL, anything to report on that?
Nothing other than what you, what's in your staff report.
Okay. And East Devils Lake Road, I haven't been to look at it. Does anybody, I know I've, I get, I, I know it took me longer to get here today and I planned on it.
And don't whine about how long it took you.
Well, I'm just saying that I, I actually planned on it taking longer because of, I always go the, the back way. So, you know-
We had the light, it's here and you couldn't use the light and you got to go to the east side and that's a tough side for an exit.
Right. And, and I think, I mean, I think it's obvious that traffic has changed in town because of that. There's a lot of people that use it. I know my neighbor and I were commenting that we don't hear the traffic that we normally hear taking East Devils Lake Road. I imagine the other people are in the same boat. So it is an inconvenience getting out.
On my end.
Yes. Okay.
I followed a car yesterday and I was like, I wonder where they're going. And right past my driveway, they pulled a U-turn. Oh.
Does anybody know what this is costing them to do, to do this repair?
Upwards of about $300,000, $250,000 to $300,000.
All right, that was more than that.
No, it's actually surprisingly not because the real fixes out there are, start at $5 million and that one really isn't even a fix either. And they go towards 20 million. So, you know, if this buys the county, well, hopefully a number of months, you know, not just months of lasting, but dry months, you know, I think that's their goal. They understand that it's not a permanent fix even maybe for this winter, you know, and they, I think, and I think everyone else should realize that too, that for 250, $300,000, they're getting an elevated road in a section of it that is most vulnerable to flooding and getting a box culvert higher, at a higher elevation to allow water to pass more so underneath the road. So, yeah, much bigger improvements than the ones, the smaller ones that they did in the previous years, but.
Well, the winner will-
Winner will tell. You know, and, and, you know, the reality is, is you're adding a lot of extra weight on a wetland that's soggy and muddy.
That's why they left the piers in there, right? To put the culvert on top of the piers?
To build the bridge on, yeah. But the road is getting widened and added asphalt too, so that part.
Oh, it's getting widened?
Yeah.
Terrible amount of fill, you know?
Yeah, to, in order to go up, you have to go out to some, you know.
So we don't fall off?
Well, it's, it's just so that the, you can pack that much more up on top and, and so.
Well, it'll be a welcome repair if it works.
Yeah, absolutely.
Harm flagger blooms?
Okay, so put forward a couple requests to Dr. Horn to come to one of your meetings. He was available at the first half of August. You know, Kent and I, we talked and it seemed pretty logical that that was going to be a pretty quick turnaround time for the district. His next available time is the 22nd or 29th of October. His schedule's pretty full before that and then even after that too, the North American Lake Management Conference, which is something the district typically tends is in November. So, you know, there's kind of a, probably a tough fit there to-
What, what time in November? Because I, I will not be here on the October 22nd or 29th.
I can check here. I think it's the second week.
That's right. I think our meeting is the 8th, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's right.
Is it for November, I'm talking about November. Is that, I'm not sure.
Uh, 12.
I'm not sure.
Our, okay, so the North American Lake Management is the third week. It's like the Tuesday, the 17th through like the 20th of November.
Does anybody object to seeing if he could come to our regular meeting on November 12th?
I'm not here on Oc-, I'm only available on the 22nd of October, so.
And same here. So I'm fine with November 12th, our regular meeting.
If we can get him.
If we can get him.
What, what does that do to us moving forward? Does that still fit in the timeline and getting stuff done when it needs to be done if we're going to move forward with this project?
Well, it just, it just, you don't, you don't get a contract until at least that date assumingly, right?
Right.
Because I mean, I think that's your goal is to meet with him before a contract comes into place. So bumps it forward for sure.
And then-
Like forward like another year? I mean, does it, does it get us outside of the window to get it done?
So-
Year that we were planning?
So if you're anticipating in-water work periods, you know, that's, that's a tough guess to where you end up landing. You know, you're basically got to give them three to six months to design and get that ready for you, you know? It's, yeah, certainly it's going to bump it forward. I mean-
Well, I think there's two issues here. The first is, you know, the design timeline. So if we could get it designed in three months, let's say.
Right.
Then, then we have an idea of what it's going to cost, then we have to go for financing, figure out how we're going to have a financing plan in place. And if we wanted to go for a bond, if that, if, if we're stretching it out that far and saying, hey, with bonds the way to finance it, that's, that's a May, that's a May election. And so we would want to, you know, have things ready and go for the bond for the May election because then we could get the monies and do it as soon as possible after that, as we could do work. So, I mean, I guess it would be important to, if we engage Dr. Horn's services, that we do so closely after that meeting with, and hopefully have some assurance that we can have a, a clear plan within maybe three months so that we can meet those other timelines, especially to get the financing. And then, then we're looking at sometime in 2016 of finishing that. If we don't get, if we go for a bond and don't have any other way to finance it, then we have to wait till, what, November?
For another election?
Mm-hmm.
We, you can, yeah, I mean, certainly that's an option. You can do them in the September or March elections too. There, those are double majority elections.
Yeah, right. And we, from what we heard, from what Paul and I heard, we want to stay away from those.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, they're certainly, you know, require turnout.
Right.
And approval.
Mm-hmm. So.
And then, and then there's permitting too, you know? And that's, you know, a question mark. There's, you know, it can be a long permitting process, you know? Figure half a year just for, for the state, the federal one can be, could be longer for sure. You know, it's going to be, it's, it's not, so pushing out a meeting with Dr. Horn till November is in a smaller scale of, you know, hits on this project, I think. But, but it was August, right? So it is August now, so.
Right.
One of the first, one of the first financing steps has got to be to apply for some grants and that's going to, that's got to be another window of time that's measured in terms of months.
Yeah, absolutely. Half years even.
This Chase Finance Group, Paul, that you were talking about, meeting with, with the Chase Parks Grant?
Right.
For the aeration or is that only for?
I think there's absolutely opportunity there, yeah.
Fully intend to bring up the aeration project at that meeting.
Oh, okay, great.
Great.
Yeah.
In fact, even probably in a greater sense more so.
I'd like to give her a heads up ahead of the meeting. Let's do that. We want to talk about aeration and give her an idea what that's all about.
Right.
It's a her, right?
Yeah, yeah, she is, Cavender.
So we're looking at trying to get him for our November 12th meeting.
Correct. And, and also just as a note there, it's in your staff report though, but, you know, yeah, the, the second contract that came back is, exceeds your $100,000 limit. And Dr. Horn said that, you know, he had spoken with HBH, who was kind of the larger half, section of, portion of this, that they felt that they could be, there could be some room to, to meet our needs and we're interested in attending that meeting with you as well to have the engineers here, the other engineering.
Right.
Out of Newburgh. So just want to put that forward as a coordination opportunity and effort that hopefully can happen. You know, Dr. Horn obviously being the, the most important contact.
Right.
If we can't get him and HBH, do you want to look at another, I mean, what's your preference there?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know. I guess if it looks at the other-
A, we got to stay under the $100,000. And, and I mean, I can't believe that, you know, given the relatively small part of the contract, it's going to be Dr. Horn's and their part, that they can't work this thing out. I, I really, I don't understand the insistence on having the, the big number for the permitting services and, you know, and cutting out the other stuff. So, I mean, at some point, if they, they don't budge, I mean, we have to ask him, I think, to find another engineer.
Certainly an option.
And that's one thing about not having him come up until end of October or, or November is we got, hopefully they have time to work through this little contract issue that they're having.
So we'll just go for an October, or excuse me, November 12th then? Not to worry about the 22nd? Is that what I'm?
Well, I guess, Mike, I-
I'm not here the 22nd or 29th and I, I think Tina says she can't make the 22nd.
No, the 29th.
Oh, you can't.
I can't make the 29th either, but what I, I guess what I was going to ask Brian is, would you be, if, let's say November 12th wouldn't work, could, could you join us on Skype or, or whatever? Would that be, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I'm not set up to do that now, but I probably should be, so. Yeah, I'll try. Let's just say November 12th is the first option and if has to be the 22nd, then let's do the 22nd. I'll just try to figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, the technological world in this room is not great. You know, even a teleconference was pretty tough. So I kind of caution on that as far as being a success. It'd be better to have people in the room, obviously. Just be aware of that, I guess.
Well, if you could go for November 12th and then if that's not going to work, send us an email and then we can discuss some other options for the 22nd. I'd really like all of us to be there.
Yeah, I, I would too.
Okay, let's see. Where are we at here? Water quality?
I got a question in here for, for Paul on Alex Horn. His first initial bid was like 129?
116?
118, yeah.
So, and then when we came back to him with, we'd like to see something under $100,000, was there a, a lot of exclusions out of his original contract that brought it down to the 99?
It's, actually, I think, I think they're in here. So I've got the original listed here and then the revised. And the main change was in removing, reducing permitting costs, but then removing what was identified in the first one as task seven, which was like bid assistance and, and stuff that we asked for. We didn't ask for permitting in the original off scope. So, you know, when we pitched it back to him between one and two coming to us, it was pull out the permitting. Well, they did pull out some, but they pulled out another task which is really counter to what our, what our needs are.
So he's figuring on roughly $20,000 in permitting?
Uh, the original one was 24.5 civil, well, no, civil design services. Permitting services, 22 from HBH and I, yeah.
So how do we benefit with this study, survey, contract? How do we benefit in what, what gives us the advantage to move forward with this $100,000 contract and we still don't have a vendor? Is that just pre-qualifying us for the project?
Yeah, well, it's-
Engineering.
Creating, creating an engineering plan, which is what under statute you need.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's what we need, you know? And then from, with an engineering plan, you can address financing issues because you have to have a hearing on how you're going to finance it and you've got to have a pretty clear plan as to what the, the needs are of the plan.
So once we have this said, engineering plan, he's not strictly the only vendor or?
In fact, excluded basically. Yeah, this is an engineering plan, which would be put out, would, we would create a bid packet for an invitation to bid, which would be competitive bid process. From the conversations I had with Dr. Horn is, you know, most of this stuff is off the shelf stuff. It's not going to be difficult to find. There's companies, you know, maybe not in Oregon that do a lot of this, but nationwide that have access to these types of, you know.
So is this engineering process going to be something that the contractor utilizes?
Absolutely. I mean, it will have to meet the engineering process, the requirements of engineering. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, if, and when we get down that road, would we be able to do an onsite visual to see what the, what the results are from his engineering report?
I don't understand.
He's engineering a system, right?
Right.
So once he engineers that system, somebody's going to bid to take the contract to do the work.
Right.
So where, where are we with that as far as what gives us an advantage having this $100,000 engineering plan?
Well, in order, it's just like a chicken and egg thing. You have to have an engineering plan as part of your process to then put out to bid. That's how the statute's written.
And, and the bids are based on the engineering plan.
Yep.
So, I mean, they don't, you know, you're not, at least all the bidders are bidding apples and apples, not every. The other way of doing it is all these vendors just come in with their own, their own design and they design it themselves and, you know, you, I, I think you have less confidence in what you're actually getting.
But that is an- But that is an option? I thought that wasn't an option.
Yeah, it's not. We need to have an engineering plan. I, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's...
I think we, we found out by statute, we have to have an engineer.
It's not an option. We, we thought it was an option, but it's not.
Okay, 'cause I was like, if that's the case, why can't we just hire somebody to look at what people bring us? Seems like that would be a lot cheaper.
No, yeah, by statute, we can do that.
Engineering plan is what the statute calls for.
By statute, okay.
And, and, you know, we also, we, we need a design for permitting, we need it for, and to get any grants.
Yeah, financing, absolutely.
We're gonna need the, you know, a design plan. And, you know, honestly, having Horn, having Horn's name attached to it should help us in that regard.
With grants.
With the grants. Yeah.
I have no idea.
Dr. Horn is, is definitely an expert. You're absolutely right, it cannot hurt us to have his name attached to it. So, absolutely.
$108,000 of hurt.
Well, unfortunately, his is only a couple, $20,000.
$27,000 is right.
You know, I mean, his portion is very small in this...
I think, though, it's important that, because I, I mean, obviously, Bill is getting asked this question, I'm getting asked the question of why do we have to spend $100,000 before we ever get any thing? And, I mean, I'm struggling with that, too, honestly. It, it seems like a lot to spend before we ever get one blower, bubbler, whatever you want to call them.
Prior to spending even $100,000, I'd still like to be pacified or satisfied with seeing what kind of a system we need and how it's worked, and how it was, how it was brought up. From a point of, here, we got a damaged water body, fix it. I want to see some, I want to see something physical, I would like to see something physical before committing to a $100,000 investment that, yeah, it's a feather, it's a feather in our cap, but...
Is that what you're saying? Saying that they've designed?
Yeah, some, a system similar to what he's...
Proposing.
Proposing in use right now.
So, that would be a site visit somewhere else, not, obviously, in Oregon.
I, I think...
He, he says the closest, uh...
Colorado?
The closest to this system is, is Cherry Creek Reservoir in Denver, Colorado.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Is, is...
Cherry Creek?
Yeah.
Should we have a road trip?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good...
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, water quality, Paul?
So, okay, water quality's getting kind of grim out there, frankly. You know, it's, and it's not, but any sugar-coated at all. The, the cyanobacteria that's been present, the blue-green algae that's been dominant, so, back, okay, just back a few, back to like even June, the first blue-green algae bloom that we got was a bloom of Microcystis. It's a pretty good toxin producer. Started kicking off pretty early, and it looked like it was gonna grow into something quite large. It got replaced by this Gloatricia, which is this, what's very dominant out there right now. And that is actually, now, we were just looking under the microscope earlier tonight, there is a slight bloom of highly toxic cyanobacteria, Anabena, that is starting to trickle in. So, this, the, the toxins that are in the water could, could increase readily without a visual change much at all, because it's already really green, and, you know, you've like tested, and, oh, it's fine, right? Well, then you test it again, and it's not fine, because the species have changed, or the Gloatricia actually ends up producing toxins. Is this thing still running on?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So, so, that's, that's what is on the horizon, likely. You know, Anabena is a very toxic bloom. It's got its own toxin named after it, antitoxin. We don't actually monitor for that toxin either. So, if we, what, what we would be obliged to do is to just either send out samples for toxins, or get, send out samples for cell counts. Now, the cell count is, it's good, good, but it's not great, because you only find out so much information. The state does have guidelines based on cell counts, and if you exceed those, then you list it. Now, unfortunately, our long-term person that does that workforce for the, basically the last 20 years, has closed their business. So, we have been without a paid, you know, person that, well, that we would go directly to for some time. We did get a volunteer, PhD, out of Haffield area, that volunteered to do some analysis for us. Now, whether or not she's able to do this on demand at the timing that we may need, if it's looking at like an antitoxin bloom, Anabena bloom, I don't know that for us. You know, she's a full-time job. But we can, we, there are other labs, we could send just a full analysis out for the, for the toxins, which would be probably the simplest thing to do. The other thing that we could do is buy additional kits for antitoxin and invest a little bit of money into an incubator to run that test, too. So, that, that may be actually a, a more reasonable option, because for, say, $500 kit and a $300 incubator, we could have antitoxin in-house versus an antitoxin single, single test, you know, one spot somewhere in like a couple hundred bucks, you know? And not very revealing as to the, the, the amount of information that we get when we do it in-house.
If, if we were to go the in-house route, how often would we be using that in the, in the future, projecting in the future?
Well, I would, I would use it based on what, what kind of cyanobacteria are present, you know? So, if we get something besides Gloatricia, we'd use it just as often as the Microcystin, because it's just as likely that that toxin is present. Yeah, so, I, I mean, and really, it's just, the kit is only gonna last you basically two sample days, you know, if we use it based at the same rate that we use our existing kits. The incubators, like $300, that's not that much of, I mean, that, that lasts for a long time, years. So, I think it might be wise to just go ahead and move forward on that. Certainly, you have the option, though, of just sending out the samples, but you don't, you know, you're, you know, like, right, right where the, the worst scum is, is, you know, is gonna be the highest value, for sure. It's nice to know, from a lake user's perspective, what the lake as a whole is looking like, too.
Right.
So, that's why we have a high frequency and also a high spatial extent of sampling. We cover a lot of spots.
Right.
Being a high lake user myself, and installing boat lifts when I'm underwater a lot, and day before yesterday, I did a boat lift, I was under the water probably three to four feet, and I couldn't see six inches in front of my face with a mask on. It just looked like you're driving down the road in a snowstorm. It's just, it comes in front of you, and you can't do this to clear it, or...
Yeah.
But, as far as toxin goes, I might have a few irritated skin areas, but I don't, it would have to be way more concentrated, I think, to really scare the people out of the water, or tell people they can't go in the water.
Well, this...
A lot of people ask me all the time, is it safe?
Mm-hmm.
And when they're asking me that, I'm in the water, so.
So...
If it is or not.
Yeah, so, the toxins are really the key. You know, I think that's why, you know, when we started this program, really, 2007 and then full-on 2008, we ramped up to toxins straight away, because the toxins gave you information that was quantifiable against known information. You know, you'd have, you had a state limit, we could say, can't exceed this. The cell counts is just like, yeah, it's, it's subjective in a sense, because it, that doesn't relate directly to how toxic it is, because these, these species don't necessarily produce toxins all the time. So, they may be toxic one day and not the next, effectively. And so, that's why the, the toxins are more, you know, I think, a better tool. And the Microcystin was available when we started, and so, that's why we chose that one. The antitoxin kits are available now.
So, do you test the water that much, or the test kit would be advantageous to the district, or for your personal?
Absolutely, absolutely, we do, yeah. To, to send the samples out, you know, it's like 200 sample per toxin level, you know? I mean, to lift the advisories, we spend about a thousand bucks. And that's because there's four toxins and the cell count done. Maybe it was like 850 or something. And that's just one site.
Yeah.
You know, not 11 or 12, or whatever we do.
So, would our cost be a savings to the district rather, obviously, than sending it to a lab?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. The labs are, you know, and you, you do use, again, there's the staff time element, too. You do use your resources, however you want to phrase it. That is a cost. So, to do a full quantification, it is a good six hours, five, five hours in the lab plus sampling time.
Do one test?
To do one day's worth, yeah, yeah. Because the way we set it up is, we, we test multiple sites, and we do them all on that same day, and so, we have, you know, good, you know, cross-section of the lake. And you could do fewer sites and save, the kit is, you use up part of the kit just to do one sample. So, if you wanted to sample regatta ground, so you're gonna use up one-sixth of a kit to do one sample site. To do another, say, four sample sites, you could use up a quarter of the kit, because when you calibrate the, when you set it up, you use a fraction of it just to calibrate it each time.
How many weeks do you test?
We test basically during blooms, from anytime Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then beyond Labor Day as it, as it blasts out. We also have incorporated what's known as a strip test monitor for Microcystin. Now, it's only available for Microcystin, so not this other toxin. But it's, it's a quicker and dirtier kind of approach. In fact, we used it today, and we can say, okay, the, the toxin's bracketed between this number and this number.
So, you see that enough, you can kind of eyeball it, can't you, and tell you whether it's this kind or that kind?
The, the...
Smaller BBs or the...
Yeah, and so, your eyes can tell you quite a bit. However, just, just by kind of looking at the, say, Miyazu today, it looked a little bit different than it had kind of the week before, and sure enough, you put it under the microscope, and you've got Anabena mixed in there. So, instead of just the little BBs, little pom-poms, there's other stuff in there, too. And that, and it was a very slight difference, you know, to an untrained eye, from, from a distance, looks all the same. From a trained eye, from close, from, from close-up, not under a microscope, looks slightly different. It really takes the microscope to, to really tell you that.
But really, a microscope, I mean, it's not hard to identify these.
No, comparing those two under a microscope is very simple.
I taught middle school for all those years, and we would, we identified different types of...
Gloatricia, yeah, I mean, these are, these are, you know, definitely...
We could do it.
You could do it, yeah, yeah.
We could.
That's another committee.
Right, right.
So, yeah, having, having that, the ability to do antitoxin, I, I could, I mean, it's something you budgeted for. And so, if you wanted to allocate that money, we could order that stuff up tomorrow and have that in-house, and, and the incubator might be a little bit of lag time, but certainly we could, we could venture to have it by next week. And, yeah, this, antitoxin is, is, antitoxin is, is the, is one of the other real creepy ones, frankly. It's a fast-acting death toxin, is its other name. Yeah, no kidding.
Well, we don't want that.
We do not want that, yeah. And, and really, just so the public is aware, this is toxins that you would really have to ingest, or your dog would have to ingest. And often, pets are the most vulnerable, because they're gonna go out, they're gonna play in, they're gonna jump right in before you, I mean, you open the back of the car, and they're in the water. And you may not have wanted them to go in the water, but they come back and they're all green. Well, then they're gonna spend half hour licking themselves clean.
Right.
And that's accumulating toxins into their body. Now, these toxins and others can create rashes and other things, like, I think, Bill, you were talking about, you maybe get a rash. That's, that's the kind of level of impact that you would have if you're not breathing it in or ingesting it in other ways. You get it inside your body, and then you have a lot, you know, higher potential of impacts. Certainly, again, pets being the most vulnerable.
Well...
I think we should order the kit.
I...
Make a motion that we order the test.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, yeah, great. Elizabeth, just, did we, we covered the phytoplankton analysis, the data sharing. I just wanted to announce that Elizabeth has done a great job creating mobile-friendly emails coming out, maybe she'll talk about it a little bit coming up here, but that's, that's gonna be a, a big outreach to, to get people that information, too.
I've noticed a change in the, in the information, how it's presented. Elizabeth, do you want to give us your report?
Ah, thanks, Elizabeth. So...
Whatever you like, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure you're getting on the mic.
Not really.
That mic has been acting up here.
Hello? Okay, so, since the last meeting, we obviously put on the Revival, and I was able to run the booth and give Paul some breaks to go out and communicate with everyone and make sure it runs smoothly. I also have been testing for bacteria weekly, and I have been doing a lot of the lab work. And so, that takes up a couple days of the week, and then the rest of the time, I'm spending doing mobile-friendly access on the website, the newsletter, the announcements. I've also been working on the quarterly newsletters, and, yeah, I think, we've had, oh, outreach is a big one that has been come through lately. We had a group from Lynnfield College come, and it was a class, and so, we got to make a presentation, and then take them out to a dam site, and basically, you know, spread awareness about what we do here at Devil's Lake. We had a group called the Leaf Internship Program, and it is a really competitive internship program, and they came by, and they were actually with the Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, but we, I got to do a presentation to them, an outreach, and they were high school-level kids, so it was good to, you know, get that out there. And then, we also have a group of young kids coming tomorrow. And so, that is our outreach.
Where are these kids from? Where's tomorrow's kids from?
I don't know what the program is called.
It's the...
Lincoln City Rec Kids.
I, I guess my question to you is, you know, Elizabeth, you've been here, what, six weeks now?
I have.
Is it, is it what you expected?
Yeah, it is. It is what I expected. It was a, it's actually been a little bit more hands-on than I thought with the water quality. I've gotten a little bit more independence as we've gone on, and I've learned, and so, that's nice. Yeah, and then outreach is pretty good, so...
Do you, I, I think, what, do you have another month left? Is that it?
I do, yeah, till September 19th, or 17th, I forget what it was.
I guess, maybe at the next, at the next board meeting, I would, I would appreciate if you could tell us how, how you saw this internship leading to maybe your job, or how, in your schooling, or how you see that affecting you, because I think the value of an internship is great, and I just want to see what your opinion is on that.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
New business, audit review.
All right. Yeah, so, we put this out to bid earlier, I think it was like out through like middle of July there, and we had interest from one other firm, but just this one bid, which is your long-term auditor, that submitted bids, Grimstad and Associates. Now, the district opted, I guess it would've been three years ago, to go for a review, which is a lesser detailed amount of information that they go through and has, you know, lesser value, I guess, in it, certainly indicated by the time and, and the, the amount of work that was required. That was all laid out in that packet, so I can't, I don't, won't go into detail on those things. That was all laid out in that packet, so I don't, won't go into detail on those things. The, the one value of an audit, though, is when you're looking at, you know, borrowing money or other things, there's, there's higher value to an audit. The district decided that, well, there wasn't $6,000 for the value to the audit over the four, 35, 36, whichever we had a few years ago. So that's just a little bit of background, but the, certainly, you know, our auditor is well-qualified to do this again for you. You are required to have at least a review done by New Year's Eve this year.
So you recommend that we...
Yeah, I would...
...this contract and...
Definitely to, would recommend working with Grimstad and Associates. I think that you're well-served with the review. It's certainly a lot less work from our end, too. I mean, staff has a big effort that goes into this financial review and/or audit, or audit. So that does save some time there. And we do have quite a bit of work that goes into it.
My antenna went up and you said it might, I mean, is it potentially make a difference whether you're getting grant or not, whether we have a, or bonding or whatever?
So...
An audit or a review?
I would say surely, potentially. I'm not, I don't live in the finance world, so, you know, Moody's would say, oh, one thing, they would have the expertise to say. But when we were talking about it three years ago, that was, that was the question that was risen, was that, yeah, you do have more certainty when someone, when an entity has gotten an audit. There's more understanding of the financial position of that entity. That would certainly go into, if I was to work for Moody's, I would assume that would be something they'd be interested in having.
Well, I'm sure that once we get, if we, if we get in secure financing for the aeration project, that we will have to have an audit.
I think you absolutely would do, would, I mean, that would certainly raise the level. And in fact, with the funding threshold, you may actually be obligated to.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
That's what you're saying, right, okay, yeah.
But I guess we could just do that at that time. If we're told that we'll give you a financing as long as you have an audit and you're clean, we'll provide the financing, so why do it before, before that, so?
I would move that we go ahead and secure the services of Grimstad and Associates for our review slash audit.
I'll second that.
Well, so for, I would say, review or, which, you have to pick, really.
Review.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Review. I second review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, so I'll put out and notice that intent and then after seven days of pass, if there's, well, actually, there's nobody else that bid on it, so it effectively goes right to them, so just process there. Thank you.
Next, we have goal prioritization. We met in a special meeting, trying to remember the date right now.
July 20th.
July 20th, to discuss goals. We had a lot of discussion and good participation from the public at that meeting. And Paul provided us with both our current goals as well as a list of the board comments, public comments and such, and then what we were to do today. I hope that we were able to do that, all of us, come together with, and come up with some goals that we feel that the new board and the current board, sitting board, has for the coming year. And I don't know, how did, how did you approach yours, Brian? Did you come up with a list of goals from what we had and then prioritize those? And I don't know what the rest of the board did. That's, I basically came up myself with a list of goals and then some, some activities associated with those goals that would build in achieving those goals.
Well, I mean, because we focused currently on reducing nutrient loading and internal nutrient cycling, and tied into that is reducing cyanobacteria dominance, I, I kind of like how the current ones read. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with our current objectives and how they tie into what we're actually doing now. So, and that's really about all I have to add.
Okay. Bill or Tina?
Well, this isn't in any order, so I apologize if you're looking, but definitely to move forward with the committee idea of, you know, smaller subgroups. And, I mean, we talked about three of them tonight with septic and sewer, the revival, water sampling, those three. And I, more, but that, that's definitely one that I want to move forward with. And, I mean, this is pretty complex.
Maybe I could help.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to...
Well, I, I went ahead and I looked at both the board comments and the public comments, and I kind of put things in categories and I'll share those, what I had. I first, first goal that I saw as prevalent that came from the board as well as the public was that we need to engage stakeholders. And so that would be one of, one of my major goals for the 2015, 16 year. And along with engaging stakeholders would be, one, provide outreach to the neighborhood associations. Two, form volunteer committees to promote and organize lake activities. These are just, just a start of a few. Perform water quality testing. I think that we could get together a committee that Paul could train and they could do, go out and test and they'd probably enjoy it. And then, you know, a group of us could, you could show us how to run the lab and do that, and we could free you up from doing those things. Another one might be to promote the SOS program. And then Tina also said, you know, in our discussion about sewers, have a committee formed around sewer, sewers and septic tank inspection, build the land inventory, something along those lines. But basically, engage the community. I think we could, in trying to get people to be part of our board decisions, we could put something like an ad in the newspaper like Brian used to write, but soliciting the community for people to volunteer. And they contact Paul and we form some committees, get a list of firm committees that we'd like to form, and then solicit them through an ad in the newspaper or an article from the newspaper, what we're trying to do, and see what comes about. Next, under engaging stakeholders, I also had that we should, we should try to work cooperatively with the Marine Board, Sheriff's Office, Marina Operator, and any interested citizens to identify and mark lake hazards. That was one of them. So those were the things I came up with, engaging stakeholders. The next, the next topic that was brought up was lake aeration. I think the things needed to accomplish that would, again, we did it tonight, meet, meet with Dr. Horn on scope and design of the project, so we're trying to meet with him. Come up with a funding strategy for the aeration project. Complete construction and operation, hopefully during the 2016, if that's possible. So set some timelines with regard to that, depending on permitting and everything else. But set some real timelines so that we can actually feel like we're moving forward. And then, in relationship to that, I think we also need to, it was brought up that we need to look at re-energizing the grass cart permit application as a possible, possible means of vegetation management, so see where that is. And if it's, if it's not on the front burner of ODFW, see what we can do to get it, so they'll at least address that. The next thing that I felt came up was to dredge the D River. We need to obtain a dredging permit. I think Tina's going to talk about the possible use of volunteers to actually carry out that dredging tonight. So I think that's an important thing. If we look down at the D River now, it's almost non, it's not, almost not flowing. And so we need to do something there. Next, water quality monitoring, recruit and train volunteers to gather water samples and do testing during some, the summer recreational period. I just think that, you know, we could free up Paul from doing a lot of some of the things that he does, not that he's, those aren't important, it's just that I think that we have qualified volunteers that could do that and people. I'm willing to do some things, too, I know that. I just think there's a lot of community members that are out there. And then the last, maybe the last goal I had was the septic system monitoring system. We talked about that tonight. I think we can work cooperatively with the county to design and implement a workable septic inspection system. I think Tina's idea of doing a voluntary one, working toward a mandatory one, but never leaving out the idea that we need sewer, too. So, and then I also had a couple miscellaneous things, and we talked about those tonight. I think we need to make Devil's Lake Revival ours instead of contracting it out, make it a, a major thing for Paul to accomplish. And if we start on it like in December, like Paul said, hey, it's, you stretch those hours out over time and be less painful than trying to get them done all at the last minute. And then the other thing, the other miscellaneous thing I had was, it was brought up at our meeting that we're looking for staff reports, and I know Paul's implemented a kind of a weekly summary. What I think we'd really like, what I'd like to see is that we have kind of daily logs of, you know, hey, I showed up today, talked with Kent from, from 10 to 12. We spoke about blah, blah, blah. Something so that we get an idea of, I mean, why are you spending your time doing that? Is it, you know, doing these different things just so that we understand your job, Paul? It's vague, it's out there, we know you're busy, but hey, we need to understand what's, what it is. So then if people come to us and say, what's, what's Paul doing? We can, we can respond to that. And if we have just a, just a, you know, 10 to 12 did this, you know, a summary, what you got out of it. If you attend a city council meeting, why did you go to the city, the sewer meeting for the city council? Did you testify? What, those are the types of things. And then finally, I think we need to revise the Devil's Lake plan. We have, we're pulling together possibly new goals. I think that that requires a revision. So those are the things I pulled together out of all that information. I may have missed some things, but...
I found my written down ones. One that I had that you didn't touch on was some sort of quantification of where our, our nutrient loads are coming from, rather than just throwing stuff out there. I've heard a lot, you know, it's coming from septics, it's coming from, and there should be a way to quantify that. I'm assuming that somebody does that type of work, and I don't know who it is or what it is, but I would surely like to know so that when we, and I would think that if we wanted to move forward and apply for grants or funding, that they, the people that we're asking money for would want to know that as well, so. And then I would like to establish, in addition to the other committees, a recreational slash event committee, which does fit along with your revival idea, but to, so that we're engaged in, you know, the Devil's Lake Dash. I just talked to the lady today that is organizing, and I don't remember the name, Columbia Outboard Association, is that sound right? The races in September, you know, and I just, you know, was asking her some questions about it and she, you know, was pretty happy that I was interested and engaged in. So, and what, again, referring to, back to that meeting that we had with the VCB Director and Miles, of those type of events we could build around, and if the city was involved in those and we were involved with those, you know, those are things that we could turn into more than just a few people showing up at East Devil's Lake Road State Park for a boat race. We could, you know, build other events around that. And the other stuff we, we've all talked about tonight, but, and I agree with all of the ones that you have, and the only one I guess I would add to that is that quantifying our nutrient sources. Where are they coming from and what should we go after?
Mr. Sexton?
I'm going to follow suit with your, your recommendations for the goal prioritizations. I think that's a positive direction with the most beneficial results being from the people that get involved in the goals, whether it be volunteers or the management.
Now, how do we put those together, I guess, is the thing? Do you have a suggestion, Paul?
Well, so I have clear language, right? So your goals are, have a clear, so my suggestion might be to, you know, if, if these goals are amenable to the board, that we look at some of the wording you may have, Kent, because I think you did a pretty good job and you obviously, you know, relayed that.
What I tried to do is pull everything together and just put it in categories and summarize what a lot of people said.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, when we looked at the language, and maybe I was remiss to not put the, the language of the goal in there, I just put the summary kind of topic, one through seven. You know, there's a little, a lot of nuance in that when you set a goal. So I think we should probably sit down, maybe you and I, if that, again, if that, if these are the goals that the board is wanting to address, and if there are goals that, that the district has that are existing that you want to scratch, you know, some of them may just be, just a refit of the wording. And I think what I heard is a lot of more the implementation, you know, when you, you know, outreach to stakeholders may be a goal, but, you know, engaging maybe is a stronger word or something, that you may want to incorporate that into the official goal or something like that. And then if, if you have those goals and then you have maybe little action items associated with those, like you said, you want four or five committees of these, of this nature, not, you know, we can have those as kind of identified. And then, but the goals themselves will be a little bit more just, you know, broader.
Right. Well, I, I think that, you know, the, the current goals, at least in my opinion, they're good goals. They're so broad that we don't have any way to evaluate what's taking place. These are really, many of them are, have kind of gotten long-term, although the sewer LID with new technology, that's basically been accomplished now. So we could, we could take that off of at least the...
Well, that one is more encouraging additional sewer LIDs based on new technology. So there's, if, I mean...
By just saying that, I mean, that we, you know, that, that was accomplished by Brian's, that, at least a portion of that has been accomplished by Brian's.
Yeah, and it was really the district's focus would be to help replicate that.
Right.
I think that whatever we decide collectively the goal should be, that they should be measurable and have a timeline attached to them, because I think that that's a problem if you get goals written like this, like communication with stakeholders. with stakeholders. What does that mean?
Yeah, and like I said, this is the summary of that goal.
Sure, sure.
More precise, and which is on the web.
But I think that they should have times attached to them, and, you know, I think they should be quantifiable of. We want to, you know, a thousand more email addresses on our, I don't know what it is. I'm throwing stuff out there, but if it's a goal, it should, it should have some measure to it. And if we can't put a measure on it, then maybe it needs to move down to the bottom of the list. If it's just a pie in the sky thing.
You know, I said I like the list of current objectives because it is pretty broad, and I think it kind of addresses, because it's problem focused, it, you know, tells us what we need to be doing, or at least it's a starting point for telling us what we need to be doing. But, and I think cutting across all of those, I'm not sure that engaging stakeholders is a separate goal in itself. It's just that the idea should be that for each one of these objectives, we're going to engage stakeholders and recruit volunteers to try to accomplish all of these goals. I mean, it's just kind of an underlying theme for the whole program, for everything.
Right. But I also think we need, by putting some specifics down, we'll get, we're better able to call to...
Sure, yeah. It's, probably we all talking about the same thing.
Right, right. Well, and, you know, just like the water quality monitoring, I mean, I looked at, really, what that encompasses is that the current Devil's Lake Plan, current objectives, those, we're monitoring that. We're doing all of those things to try to reduce those things, but we need to monitor it.
Well, number seven is sustained and monitoring plan as a means of evaluating.
Right.
So...
It kind of captures all the ones above it. But would it, would it be okay then if the two of us sit down and we took what we talked about today and put together something and bring it back to everyone the next meeting?
That'd be great. I'd appreciate it.
I might suggest that, you know, if we have a chance to reach out to Director Skirvin, too, see if he has some input.
Right. I actually contacted him. I sent him an email and said, hey, if you have anything to share tonight, would you, you could send it to me and I'd share that. And I didn't hear back from him. So I'd agree. I think that he needs an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that would be, that'd be the simplest way, maybe, to get some language forward that has been vetted at least by one director and staff, you know? And then the rest of the directors can say, oh, that sounds right, or that's not anywhere close to what I was talking about.
Right.
Then you have, you have, you could have an up-down vote across that, you know, by goal even, or whatever he might want to look at. So I think that's, that's good.
Okay.
A little set of a time.
D River dredging. I think Tina has something to share.
Sure.
So you wrote a letter to, I believe, Mitch Moore, who, with the Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association, to see if what I've been saying is true. That the Neighborhood Association does want to participate in the dredging. And so I met with one of our directors, Nathan Naught, and said, you know, okay, we've said we're going to do this, how, you know, how do we do it? What are we volunteering for? And he said, we'll do it and we'll get it done. And I will lead it and take charge of it. And so, I mean, obviously, the first thing we need to do is apply for a permit. And he does other in-river work, so he's familiar with how those permits work and how work has to be done in river, and I am not. And so basically, you know, I wanted to know, and I'm sure you wanted to know, that yes, the Neighborhood Association is still willing to volunteer that work. And from there, you know, it's just moving forward specifically with regards to the permit and how, how we're going to do it.
Right.
And this is in river time now, so I'm assuming that we're looking at next year. Is that correct?
Well, you know, the D River is a funny little thing because it can qualify for either side of in-water work period. The issue is salmon in and out mostly.
Right.
And so that's, rivers typically, you do it, and we're talking, should be more like stream, in-stream work.
Right.
Is, yeah, it's like July through like September. So that would preclude us from getting that done this season.
Oh, sure, yeah.
However, the lake one is the opposite. It's like...
October 1st.
October through February.
Yeah, exactly. So that, if they allowed it under that side of it, that may be something that could be happening, say, you know, January, February or something. It would, you know, the permit process is, will take a bit of time.
One of the things that Nathan brought up that I've brought up and I've had other people ask me about is, you know, do we really know that we can't add on to the west side permit and just ask for an extension all the way across that?
So the answer is, do we know if we really can't? No, we don't know if we really can't. The reason that it wasn't applied for, first off, there's two big differences. First off, that's an emergency dredging. That's not like a maintenance dredging. And so the permit that the city was able to acquire for that was pretty extensively critiqued and was allowed after extensive work. It was a, it was a pretty tough permit for them to get. And, you know, we just need to be aware of that. Now, that was for, again, emergency. So to extend it under the bridge...
So can I ask a question? Right now, we have like a three-foot swath of water going on the, on the south side of the river there. What happens when that dries up? Is that an emergency?
No, it's not an emergency.
So we're concerned about...
Emergency is like flooding.
Fish passage.
Flooding. Well, so...
There's no river for a fish to swim up. Isn't that an emergency?
So, so part of the argument that was, we were able to be successful on is that the impacts to fish were the concern. So you can't get fish when you don't have a river.
Right.
Right. We still have a river, three feet or otherwise, it's still a river. You know, fish are very capable of moving through three-foot wide river. I mean, hearing some voices in the back of the crew.
Well, I mean, I, sure, I mean, but what, how small does it get before...
Foot wide, they spawn in foot-wide water. It's not moving, fish move through small, in fact...
Thompson Creek.
Your dam would be the perfect example of that. What's the width of that? And that's allow, allowing fish passage. So those, that permit is an emergency permit for when it's flooding, not, you know, risk of flooding. And it wasn't really even about fish, it was about flooding. Like, you know, the lake level is going to be 12 feet here in a couple, in an hour or two, and it's blocked up at Kilos all the way up with sand. Big difference than like, the lake is eight and a half, nine feet, and we'd like it a little deeper in front of the cement structure. That's a big difference.
So, so we're looking at emergency versus, well, then we need to go forward with a new permit to look at dredging.
I was just trying to make it simpler.
Yeah.
If it was, you know, amended permit versus a new permit seems simpler, but maybe not.
Yeah. So does the city have that permit or is it the district?
The city has it, yeah.
So would the city have to get this permit or would...
No, the district could get a permit on its own, right.
Does the city have jurisdiction over that area?
They do. They, as a, yeah, because they do own property at that point there. So, yeah, there's property issues. There's, you know, a lot of the property, though, is owned by the state because you're talking about, you know, towards, say, like Union 50 building effectively, right? So a lot of that becomes under state lands, but there's a part of it that is not only city, but the adjoining property, I forget what the name of the hotel is, but they own part of that as well, under the, as far as the tax laws go.
Mm-hmm.
So, but the big thing is, is an application for a maintenance dredging is a lot different than emergency and...
I can't believe that the city would disagree with improving that area with the addition of a swimmable D River and a place for recreation to happen. And then the other thing is eliminating the avian poop threat. There would be no sand there, so no buildup of...
Yeah, I don't think that the landowners, the city, would be your concern as far as the application. It's going to be state lands, Army Corps, NOAA Fisheries. Those are going to be your real, I mean, you have to, of course, get first landowner permission just to apply.
Yeah.
But...
Well, this is a great opportunity to take care of a problem that's, we haven't addressed in, what, 20 years or so?
Yeah.
And I know that the board appreciates Nathan's willingness to do this and head this up. And no matter what it takes, it sounded like he was willing to take this on, and that's, that's a huge deal.
It is, yeah. I mean, thanks to him, you know, and I'll thank him in person when I get a chance to. But, yeah, it is a big deal because, and that's why I sent that letter. I tried to send it with information about the magnitude.
Right.
You know, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars of effort, not, not like one backhoe through there in an afternoon. When you do an emergency dredging in the D River, it takes an hour at most. It's quick. You're just sidecasting your stuff. You're pulling it out three feet wide and sidecasting it, and we're done in an hour. This is removal and placement and, or some, you know, thing in between, you know, which the state will have to agree to.
Right.
And find value to, too. I mean, that's part of it. If you're going to get permitted, it's their land. So, you know, if it's just the recreational value, maybe that's the biggest pitch, right? Because it's not going to be a fish concern.
Well, I'm looking at your slide up here with the E. coli, and D River is your highest E. coli number.
Yeah, so the issue with E. coli in the D River is certainly avian, as far as our best guess. Now, will that go away under low-flow conditions with a deeper pool out there?
I mean, if the birds don't, aren't standing on the sand?
Well...
May or may not.
That's may or may not. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. And the real, the real issue is that they're present there, you know, and they've get, you know...
I'm assuming that reading is on our side of the dam.
It is, yeah.
Not down where they're feeding the birds.
Right. It's, the sample site is upstream of the dam.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, great. I, again, I'd like to say thank you to Nathan and all the people that he, I know, will enlist to help us with this, if we can get the permit to do it. And so I think we should...
That's really terrific.
I mean, it's a...
Thank you, Nathan.
It's a big deal.
Help person.
And I think that right there shows the strength and the willingness of the community to pull together and do things around the lake. And so that's just a great example.
We want him to practice there so he can do the canal at Loop Drive next. I said, we want him to practice, get his practice there so he can do the canal at Loop Drive next.
Okay.
Or Thompson Creek Canal or whatever it's called.
Very good. Well, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to lake contractor and...
So, yeah, and I apologize for not forwarding on information that I got recently. The idea was to have a draft available for you, but I knew that there might be some information coming forward, and that did come forward. And Bill, do you want to just take what you...
Um, yeah. Lake contractor, as soon as my paid contract is up, which, what is it, September?
October, yeah.
October. I give myself an early birthday present and resign from the paid contractor's position and go do what I do best and volunteer my services to install and remove the dam for the duration of my, in my term. And if it needs be, I continue to do it after my term, if nobody wants to step up and continue that. But I just thought that with the, all the legal stuff that goes along with being a contractor and being a volunteer board member, that it would just be in my best interest to wash my hands of the contract and be no longer bound legally by any legal issues so that I can contribute my service to the board without a continuing expense of, you know, it's like $5,000 a year. But my only thoughts on giving up the contract is that I'm going to have to be responsible to set up and or coordinate volunteers to do the temperature, the lake level. And I thought that during summer months, it could be included in an intern position. And in the winter months, when there's not much going on, that maybe the manager could take care of the temperature and the lake level, which is, amounts to about five minutes a day, other than the installation and removal of the dam, which is probably four to five hours. So the only other thing that's left undone is the signage and the maintain, maintenance of the signs. So there again, we've, we've got about 10 hours a year in that category of signs, maintenance. And, you know, there's a 20-hour limit that was included in my contract. So I would say that I would still be available to do contracting, but if it's going to create a problem of making decisions, then I'll have to stand back and watch. So that's all I have is I'm just going to volunteer to continue installation and removal of the dam for my term unless somebody wants to step up after the term and continue that.
Great.
So whatever other instances there are to fill, fulfill, I'll definitely address that, either with volunteerism or do it myself.
Well, I think, I think the board appreciates your willingness to do that, Bill. Again, that's another example of community. And I think we could get the volunteers that are willing to take temperature and lake level readings and have some kind of a coordinated recording area that we could, we could do that. And...
And, you know, another, another beneficial part is with this, our technology is, I mean, we could put a little webcam right on the dam itself.
Your GoPro?
Whatever need be.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Need that, any motion on that or anything, Paul?
Well, I mean, so first off, thank you, you know? I mean, I think that would be the first thing I'd have to say. And so, yeah, there are just those things that you brought forward that were part of that existing contract. So if the board wants to fill those things by one virtue or, or method or another, then they should decide and help direct me to do that. That's, that's about the crux of it. That's why I didn't bother drafting a, you know, RFP to fill those voids that may not be, need to be filled, which we found out, you know, on Monday, so that was great.
Do you have any problem with Bill volunteering his efforts rather than paying him?
Not at all.
So if I understood...
I never had a problem with him getting paid for it.
I know, you did, I have. I think it's commendable and, so we need a motion to accept Bill's change from contractor status to volunteer status to coordinate that.
I don't know if you need a motion, but I, I know that his contract expires and it would be nice, I mean...
Need something in writing?
I don't know. Does the district feel they need something in writing to install?
Only thing I would say in writing is, you know, you mentioned lake temperature and lake level and a couple other things that you thought that between intern and staff we could accomplish. But I guess the only other thing, if we needed volunteer work for other tasks in there, what those are so we could identify them and either lead staff to go and find volunteers, us find volunteers and let staff know who it is, so it's not a job that gets left undone.
Right. Well, appropriate notification.
So can you provide Paul with what those tasks are that we need to fill?
Well, we have them. It's the contract that's expired.
Okay.
Well, almost, it's the... Well, almost, it's the contract that expired on June 30th, effectively. The new contract didn't incorporate much of the other stuff. That was the agreement, to remove all that other stuff.
But you're, you're willing to do some of those things. I guess what I want to know is, he's willing to volunteer for some of those tasks. It sounds like maybe he's suggesting that you guys fill some of those tasks, so what are the tasks that are left undone? We should probably know that.
So I'll prioritize the tasks as to what I, you know, what I can do.
And then if you could just provide them to Paul and send that out to us, I think that's sufficient.
Good.
Sounds great.
Is that...
I agree. Very good.
Can do.
Thank you. Non-agenda items? Are there any non-agenda items from the board?
I have one. I sent out an email to everybody a little over a week ago about the September meeting. I am not available. I also had another person email me, a citizen that attends, and that's Labor Day. If we move the meeting to September 3rd, that's Labor Day weekend, and we might get more people that can attend, that are going to be here for the weekend anyhow. So I didn't hear any response back from staff or other board members on if September 3rd was an option.
And I sent out, did you get my email, Brian, about changing the September meeting and the October meeting?
Yeah. I just, I think you sent it earlier. I just saw it today.
Okay.
But, yeah, I've got a daughter getting married that weekend, and so, but...
Oh, that's right.
But, but, I think it'll, I can do it, I'm pretty sure.
Both, both changed meetings for both dates, if that's...
We're talking September 3rd and then October, what, 1st?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, October 1st is fine. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly not one to refuse. I'll, I'll make it work because I've asked for the...
Well, I, you know, and I know Paul and I had this discussion about, you know, I know it's inconvenience for some times and to try to reorganize meetings and such, but I also think it's, you know, really important that we all, if we can, if it can't be too inconvenient to do that, that we all can be here at a meeting. I'm sorry that David wasn't able to make it today because, you know, everybody's opinion that all meetings are valuable, and so if we can, that's amenable to...
I may actually have a conflict on the 1st of October. I may be out of town, actually. Wedding I'm going to. You know, the comments that I made to you, and I think they're just worth vetting, is a meeting change, the district sets a regular meeting for a lot of good reasons.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to have a regular meeting, it provides notice for people to plan around it, provides the opportunity for the public to plan around it as well. And so we have, you know, by statute, have to have regular meetings. That doesn't mean that you can't have special meetings. Special meetings are easier to set up that are, if you are wanting to use your own facilities, that's a pretty simple thing to do, you know, setting up something at the college where you rent. To change a meeting date with this facility is, is not just a 10-second change. It does require staff collaboration, and I, I try not to make it sound like I'm complaining because it's not. It's not meant to sound like I'm complaining about the idea. It does take, like, there's about four or five people at City Hall that we have to coordinate with. Maintenance may have schedules that, of vacations that they have planned on August 1st, or, you know, it's that October 1st, too. So I just, I just put that out there that it's, it does have an impact of time and effort.
I, you know, I...
And the other part is, you know, the, it's understood that people are going to, on a volunteer board, not necessarily be able to attend sometimes. And quorums are the solution to that. You know, you meet the quorum. David wasn't able to attend. He still obviously had four, three, he would have been in a quorum. And if there are things that you feel are very important, and you're, you know you've got a wedding coming up or something, you're not going to be able to attend, you can pitch it to your colleagues to say, "Hey, can we table that? Or can we have a special meeting to accommodate that decision that I really wanted to be part of?" And I think, I think that that's a very simple solution so that then you don't have, and you can have a special meeting just on that. It could take seven minutes at the college. You just have a seven-minute meeting. You open it, have a quick discussion, and you make a decision. So I, I put that out as options and something to really consider when you look at scheduling, making alterations to your regularly scheduled meetings.
I understand that. I'd still like to, if possible, would you investigate those two dates to change if...
So September 3rd and October 1st?
And October 1st? And, you know, if the October, honestly, if the October 1st, you know, if I have to miss that, the, the regular meeting for that, I can do that or try to set up some kind of a video deal. I think I'll have access to video that night.
Yeah, I'd like to see you practice that first, and then you can show me how.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, the people I'll be with that, during that time, are the best in technology, so we'll see.
Excellent.
Thank you. Are there any other non-agenda items?
I had one. So around the watershed, you have, like, multiple kiosks, these signs. They're like lake signs. I think you're all familiar with them. Tina, not quite yet. They're like, basically, okay, so if you, say you go to Regatta Grounds and you see our kiosk there, you'll see on one of the sides of the kiosks is a huge map of the lake, and it shows things like where there's a recreational speed limit or something. I forget all the, it's outdated would be the operative word to describe them, and faded and often moldy-looking, and this, there's basically, I had to count, one, two, five or six of these around the lake, and two of which are on the state, well, yeah, two, two of which were on the state parks property. And they were concerned, and they actually took them down because they're just so old. And so it's kind of been in the back of my mind, and I think others, to replace those. And so I had some conversations with the state parks, and they're willing to design it, a new, a redesign with their staff, and then, maybe you guys could pick up the, the production of it, is kind of where I was thinking. You know, we were, we partnered with the Oregon Corrections Enterprises to get the life jacket loaner station. They put, that, that sign, I think, printed was only a couple hundred dollars, and it's pretty darn cheap, I think. And so my, my anticipation is that if we could get a design from the parks, that we could give that to those same folks, and they, they could probably manufacture something of equal value, and if not, maybe find a, another means to do that.
So what is the sign? You told me all the things that it shouldn't be, but...
It's a map.
Of the lake?
Yeah.
So like, it shows us where state parks are, city parks, boat launches?
Yeah, it's like a "You are here" kind of thing, yeah. And it really kind of gives people a kind of a idea as to the size and where the lake...
And are they at each, like, Holmes Road, Sandpoint?
Yes. Well, not all, but they're at, say, the, on First Street, which is near Hosteller Park, there's, there was one. There's one, there was one at the campground. There is one at Regatta Grounds. There is one at Holmes Road. There is one at Water Lane on Sandpoint, not at Sandpoint where, where the boat ramp is.
Oh, right.
I think that's it. I think there's five. The district produced these in the 90s, would be my guess, and they look pretty antiquated. And what, what my goal would be, because based on some concerns we heard from the, from the marine owner and others, though, about, you know, people don't know the lake, you know, it's really a good tool to know the lake.
Where to find the whales.
Where to find the whales, yeah. And one thing that I would like to go forward on such would be to add some bathymetry to that map, so that there would be some depth profile, so that, you know, here, this is a three-foot ring around the lake. This is what the depth is here, this, you know, so, so for boaters, for boater education and things like that. So I think it would be a, certainly a valuable thing. You know, the state parks, they're not there anymore. They've got these huge kiosks that if we don't put something back there, they're probably going to fill it up with, you know, "Pick up after your dog" signs. I don't know. You know, there's an empty space there at the campground that, that was holding. There's an empty space at the First Street kayak launch as well.
So the, so what you're saying, Paul, is that the state is willing to use their design people to do these for free?
Yes.
And then we just have to print them?
Right.
Sounds like a deal.
Wouldn't the city, I would think the city and the county would help go in from their parks and budgets to help with that if we're going to put those signs at Holmes Road and...
Could ask. It could be, you know, $50 worth of coordinating to save 40 bucks. I don't know. It's like, if you want to do it, it's a simple, I think, budget.
Kind of cost we're talking about, but, I mean, if you're, you know, talking about, here's where the public boat launches are, here's where, you know, there's fishing docks...
That's exactly what's on those, yeah.
I mean, it seems to me if, if the city's going to fund, you know, city parks on the lake, that they would want some sort of signage to acknowledge that, but...
It's an option. I wasn't proposing that. I was proposing the district just fund it. There's, there are signs that are the ones that, were the ones that funded them last time. I think the Marine Board may have had a few dollars in that, but...
It can't be too expensive.
Yeah, I'm thinking a couple hundred bucks a sign.
Per sign?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
That's $1,000.
Well...
I mean, I guess, if it improves the water quality, I'm all about it, but I don't see how it, parks should be paying for their signs.
Well, that's just that they're not their signs. They're your signs.
So...
Yep.
I, I guess my, my feeling is, you know, if, if we have to, if we should do it, I guess we should do it, and, I mean, if it hasn't been done since the 90s, we're probably...
Time to upgrade.
Time to upgrade, and, and we want to put our best foot forward, and if, if it costs this one time for how many years that it will last, I think that's, in my opinion, I think it's money well spent. And we're saving, we're saving, we're saving money on Bill.
So I make a motion that we upgrade our signs with the addition, with the involvement of the state for a design. Once they're designed, we can take a look, and if we want to change it, we can. If not, we'll go to print. I'd like to see that done with all of the board's slide shows, too, but I don't know what kind of a timing that is.
Well, I'll second Bill's motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Any other non-agenda items?
Thanks, Paul, for bringing that up.
Yes.
I'll make attention look for the signs.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty useful signs, I think. There's been a lot of value, having had them there.
Yeah.
I think the depth, the depth chart would be a good addition as well, if people are aware.
Okay, additional citizen comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody who would like to speak from the audience? None of you? All right. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you for coming tonight, folks. Appreciate your, your involvement. And think about the committees that are coming up. What committee or committees? Talk to your friends.